Pardon the evening when the public or anyone may speak to us about something that is not on the agenda. We cannot take action, we cannot have an extended discussion, but we can listen. Anyone who wishes to speak has up to three minutes and may speak once. Is there anyone who would like to speak under oral communications? And Sharon, I'm looking to you to let me know.
We have one hand raised, Wayne Lee.
Oh, Wayne Lee.
I don't know, that oh is is a good oh, and I like your haircut too. Mayor Derwin and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. As you know, there's been quite a lot of upheaval in in misogynic races, violence in the nation. And so the San Mateo, Asian Pacific Island Caucus, which I remember, in action to provide some seminars and panels for citizens discuss the what San Mateo County is doing to try to prevent a lot of this violence. And so on Saturday, today, the police chiefs all gathered in San Mateo for a press conference and and we'll be posting that soon to emphatically state that they're going to fight racist racist violence and and it's not, if they're not going to tolerate that in our county and we don't want that spreading into our county. We won't, we don't want racism to grow and and take and just, just, you know, make our, make our world a lot harder. And so this Saturday at 11 o'clock online, anybody who wants to attend, we, our guests will be District Attorney Steve Wagstaff and Sheriff Bolanos and the founder of Stop Asian Hate, Dr. Zhang. And you can sign up at smcapi.org, that's San Mateo County API.org. So if there's any other question, so thank you for your time. And I know that you are also with the Sheriff's Department as Milbury, and I know that you're all supportive and denouncing the violence that's going on. So I'm glad to see you all and have a great meeting.
Thank you. I was actually just going to reach out to you. So thank you for this. And we will be sure to post this and get this out. Thanks for doing this really important work and we are absolutely with you.
Thank you for your support.
Does anyone else wish to speak under oral communications?
There are no additional hands raised.
Okay. I will move on to oral communicate, excuse me, I will move from oral communication to our special presentations tonight. We have two special guests. I will introduce the first guest and Jeremy will introduce the second guest. Our first guest is Supervisor Dawn Horstley. As I'm sure you know, Dawn Horstley is our representative on the San Mateo County County Board of Supervisors for District Three. This is a geographically large and diverse territory, which includes all of the coast side from Pacifica to Half Moon Bay to Pescadero, Butola Valley, Woodside, West Menlo Park, San Carlos, part of Belmont, and all the unincorporated areas within those boundaries. Supervisor Horstley, who lives in Redwood City in Emerald Hills, began his career in public service as a deputy sheriff in 1972, patrolling East Palo Alto. He worked his way up through the ranks and was elected San Mateo County Sheriff in 1993, a job he held for 14 years. He then served on the Sequoia Healthcare District Board for four years. In 2010, he was elected to the County Board of Supervisors and reelected in 2014 and 18. The supervisor's been a champion of all things coastal, from enabling the nonprofit Puente to open a medical clinic in Pescadero, to protecting and restoring the watershed, and you'll hear about that from our next guest, to making sure that parts of Highway One do not collapse from coastal erosion to preserving agricultural lands. He is an affordable housing advocate. He co-chaired the 2015-16 county Closing the Jobs Housing Gap Task Force, which I was a member. And he's been a member of the Hart Board for many, many years. I went served on that board with him too. He is front and center in transportation. He sits on the San Mateo County Transit Authority Board and the San Mateo County Express Lanes JPA Board. I sit on that board with him. He has a long history of working on behalf of public health issues, including mental health, as well as figuring out how to house the homeless, a formidable task during the time of the pandemic. He knows the county water issues forwards and backwards from stormwater management and green infrastructure to planning for sea level rise. And as such, he is an exceedingly competent board member on the new County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District Board. I am on that one too. And in everything he does, he has an open heart, a curious mind, a roll up your sleeves and let's get it done attitude and an affable disposition. And he often adds a very much appreciated note of levity to technical discussions that otherwise might be considered a tad deadly dull. I can honestly say from working in the trenches with Dawn over the past decade that he is one of the best examples of a public servant I have ever had the pleasure to meet. Please join me in a warm welcome to our District Three Supervisor Dawn Horstley.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. Mayor Derwin, I'm really touched by your introduction. So good evening, council members, as well as Town Manager Jeremy Dennis. Jeremy and I worked together before when he worked for Supervisor Rich Corrigan, who's my immediate predecessor. I thought what I would do is, because I'm sure there are people tuning into your meeting that wanted to know something about what the county is doing on COVID. So I, I thought if you wouldn't mind, I was going to give you some of a quick rundown of where we stand as a county. And we know we are moving, we're now into the orange and we're hopeful of moving into the yellow pretty soon. But just give you some of the numbers that you certainly could look this up on the county's webpage as well. But I'll just go through it as quick as I can without taking too much time. Our case rate now is 4.4 cases per 100,000. Our positivity rate is 0.9%. And in our lowest healthy places index is 1.8%. So we're really doing very well. We're still doing testing, about 770 tests per 100,000. We do see some of the UK and California variations of in the virus. And of course, both of those viruses are much more contagious and spread much more rapidly than the the original COVID-19. Additionally, about 200,000 residents became eligible on March 15th. But unfortunately, our vaccine supply remained basically flat. And so that's one of the reasons that what we've had to do is we've had to stop our first test, our first shot vaccinations. And what, what the reason for that is the state has directed 40% of the doses to central and southern parts of the state. So that meant that we've had to really kind of pull back on our first dose vaccine opportunities. But we are still doing mass vaccination for second dose cases. We do expect to see some increases in the coming weeks, but for now we are pretty much flat. On March 20th of this year, we've had so far 235,224 people have been vaccinated. So that means 36.6% of our total population has been vaccinated. 77.6% of those 65 and older have been vaccinated. 82.3% of those 75 and older have been vaccinated. So we are doing, as we're doing mobile vaccination clinics for people who are homebound. The target vaccination sites are really, if you wanted to look at, we are doing some targeted sites and some specific areas that's listed on our website. We've enlisted Safeway pharmacies to help with some of our Medi-Cal patients. And our long-term care facilities of the 389 facilities all have completed the first dose and about 382 have actually completed a second dose. But it turns out there's an additional 113, 32 have been vaccinated and the rest we still have to do. Check up on them and see what we could do with them. So that kind of gives you a picture, a quick thumbnail sketch. And you can see all those statistics if you take a look at their website, the county's website. I think the county has done really well. That's one of the reasons that we were the first county, actually, there's one other county, a very small county. Into, what are we, an orange or something like that, a little bit before. We've actually kind of led the way and I think it's really, really a tribute to our health departments that are really a remarkable job. The other issue that you, that your constituents are probably concerned about are fire. And we are working with Cal Fire, we work with the Woodside Fire on the Fire Safe Council, Kellex Nelson has a staff person that's part of it. And Denise Anaya, who used to be the Fire Marshal for Woodside Fire, is actually the chair. And in this coming budget of our Measure K, I asked for, I didn't get exactly what I wanted. I wanted a lot of millions for fire service, but we were only able to, I was able to, besides another thing that the parks is doing, I was able to get additional 2 million that is going to be flexible, it will allow me to be, to use that money. Well, not me exactly, but you know, because I obviously don't do, but it gives me some flexibility in moving some of that to our Fire Safe Council, because they really need the funding for matching grants. Because there will be grants out of the state of California. And our Parks Department, if you, again, you look on your website, they have a big list of all their upcoming projects for next year. We really are focused on for fire, they call them shaded fuel breaks. Apparently what it is, not being a fire expert myself, is that it's not that they don't cut things down, but they take all of the lower line vegetation and and they essentially, that's fire fuel, that's what they call ladder fuel. If that catches fire and gets into the crown of a tree, then you end up with this major conflict, conflict conflagration. So they're really focusing on clearing out all that ground stuff. And we're doing fire breaks, maybe the closest area to you really is probably Wonderland. And we're doing some major project in Wonderland. And we also work with, of course, the watershed. Homeless is, you know, a significant problem for the county, just as it is for other parts of the state. In fact, it turns out that California has like 12% of the population of the country, but 80% of the unhoused people. And so I don't know if that's because we have such wonderful weather or what. But San Mateo County, we have set a goal of trying to eliminate homelessness in its entirety. And one of the ways we're doing it is we're buying hotels. So we bought one on the coast side, we bought two in Redwood City. And we're in negotiations to buy a couple others in San Mateo, looking for another one at the Northern Product County. And we do have a facility that's in Redwood City that has currently about, I think about 140 people who are homeless. And we're going to have to rebuild that facility and move it to another location. And the hope is that we could dramatically increase the capacity and provide some housing for people who are essentially really need to be, you know, they're, they're very low income. They may have mental health issues and essentially they are clients that probably don't have any other option but to have housing provided by the county at some location. So that gives you a thumbnail sketch of what the county is doing and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thanks, Dawn. Sharon, are there questions? Or people have their hands up?
There are no raised hands.
What about the council? Do you have questions?
Mayor Derwin, we have a raised hand, sorry.
Okay, let me finish with the council. Does anybody on the council have a question? All right, back to the public.
Kristy Corley.
Hi, Kristy.
Hi Supervisor Horstley, thank you so much. I just wanted to share my experience going to try to get a leftover vaccine yesterday in Redwood City. At Stanford, there was about 50 of us standing outside. I did talk to a female that had gone three days in a row. And then a woman came out and said, no leftover vaccines. So we're just trying to make sure the vaccines don't go in the trash. But I do want you to know that down at that facility, there was 50 of us that were turned away. And I hear that that's happening at many hospital vaccine locations in the area. Just wondering what you know about that.
Well, I do know that that happens. And what happens is that, well, let me give you, give you an example. So if we, say we're setting up a facility for, or a mobile clinic for, say farm workers. So maybe we've got 100 doses of vaccine and 90 people show up. Well, now we've got 10 doses left over. And so what we do is we do then offer it to people who oftentimes are volunteers on those sites. Or they might happen to be, or they know about it and they've showed up and are lucky enough to be able to, you know, be, take one of those vaccines. Once they take that first shot, then they are eligible for the second. And what, what happens is the second shot has to come within, I think, within three weeks to four weeks.
Right.
So I do know that that happens. I know that we don't want to waste any vaccines. And so it's inevitable, every facility you have, whether it's at the SF International Airport or it's at the Event Center, or if it's one of our pop-up clinics, we invariably, not everyone shows up and there's always a few extra doses and the people who are in line get those doses. One of the things that we do do though is that, for example, our court staff, for some reason, the governor did not prioritize people in our courts. We think it's important that they be vaccinated. So we do take their names down and when we have extra vaccines, we do call them first. So if we, if we know that, for example, if like I said, like I'm saying, if we have a clinic that we have 100 doses and we know that 90 people are not going to, are always, are signed up and we're going to have 10 extra, we will then contact those court staff and have them come down. So we have sort of a system, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't always work.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to report back.
Thanks for the report. It's interesting to hear that. I know that, well, the systems I went through initially, because I am 77 and I do have asthma, you know, underlying health condition. I first went through Sutter and I got my first shot through Sutter. Then they then canceled the second shot because they ran out of vaccine. So I then went into the county system and got my second shot through the county system. So the county's done a really great job. In fact, I think we've done better than Kaiser or, or Sutter.
I think I see another hand in the public, Wayne Lee. Is that a new hand?
Yes, it is. Wayne.
Thank you for a second bite. Nice to see you Supervisor Horstley. I think your beard looks pretty distinguished. Someone has said that, somebody remarked that you probably actually look Asian too, so it makes you more distinguished.
Well, my, my granddaughter's Asian. My, my daughter-in-law is from Taiwan. So my, you know, I did my, they live in Berkeley. So I, when all the anti-Asian stuff called, came, it started, we started seeing those reports. I called my granddaughter, Mon Chung, and asked her if she had seen that in high school. She has not, fortunately. I said, if you tell, if anybody bothers you, tell your grandpa.
Well, you know, the young people are our future and I have a lot of hope for them. My question has to do with mental health. I think it's great that the county is doing a lot and doing a lot of, making a lot of impact on the homeless. What we're experiencing is also people who don't want to go into like the housing and have mental health issues. And on top of that, our policemen are also asked to evaluate mental health issues in people. And sometimes it doesn't end up very well. So I was wondering, what is the county doing about those?
Well, I mean, three things. One is that, when I was talking about our clients, when I was saying, what I meant to say is that for certain clients who have mental health issues, we would like to have them in permanent supportive housing. Meaning that they have to be, you know, very, very low income. Because some people only subside, subsist on $800 or $900 a month. And so we have really very low income. At the same time, we have to have case management, because if people who have significant mental health issues, they need, they do need to have a lot of support. So we do look for places to have permanent supportive housing. The other thing we're doing is that we have a current, many people don't know this, but we have a mental health hospital in, where is it? I guess it's Corleone's Canyon essentially. And in fact, called, it's, it's, it is Corleone's and it's, it's a hospital facility for about 116 people. It was built in the 1950s originally as a tuberculosis hospital. And I started some years back really pushing to replace it, a more modern facility that instead of big concrete structure, I wanted to have something that was a more normalized facility. So we are embarking, it's actually a pretty expensive project, but it's in the same location in that core that, that same canyon area. So it's really kind of an open space area. It's essentially in exactly the same place that it's currently at, so we don't have to worry about, you know, neighbors not wanting it. And it's, and it's close enough to Redwood City and close enough to San Carlos that there's bus service available. Easy for families to get a visit to, to be able to visit a loved one. So that's one thing that we're going to do a groundbreaking in April, I think it's April the 4th. So I should, I'll probably, what I will do for the council, I'll send you the invitation to watch the groundbreaking. I'm really excited about it. It'll be a facility for 120 folks. There's also a facility for mentally, or youth with mental illness. It's Canyon Oaks and that's a certainly a cert, a significantly smaller number of young people. And then the other thing we are doing is we're working with police departments in Redwood City, San Mateo, South San Francisco, and Daly City. And we are embedding clinicians in with law enforcement. And the purpose would be all those high-risk cases that officers call, are called upon, where a person is armed or assaultive. We want a clinician to go with the officers to do a better case, a better evaluation to essentially de-escalate those cases so we have a better, safer outcome. And at the same time, just to make sure that we are on the right track, we've engaged the Gardener Center to do an evaluation of that project. And our hope is that what we will do is change policies with law enforcement, improve the response for, to people who are in mental health crisis and come up with a safer, better alternative. And at the same time, we also have some other facilities too. We have a, oh, I can't think of all the names of all these programs. We have a Serenity House that is on the campus of our hospital. And that's a place where instead of taking somebody who has a mental health crisis into either a psych ward or jail, they can take them to Serenity House for short-term treatment. And it's not a locked facility, but there are, you know, staff available, treatment staff. And it's a, it's a step, well, it's taking somebody out of their crisis environment, giving them treatment, but at the same time not putting them into a hospital or certainly out of jail. So this is a number of things, a number of projects and that we are embarking on or have embarked on in the, in the past. And I think the county has a pretty robust system of support for people with mental health issues.
Thanks. John Richards, I see your hand up.
Okay, I just, Dawn, I just had a question about another, another angle that some towns seem to be taking for the partly covering the issue of housing, but other poverty-related problems. And that is the message, the news that Oakland has joined, I guess, Stockton and putting out a guaranteed income for the next 18 months, I think it is. They're planning on giving to 100, several, I don't remember how many people, but a $600 stipend per month for 18 months. And for people under a certain level of the poverty, poverty level or around that level. So I'm just wondering, is there anything comparable being talked about in our county? Do you know?
Well, not, not exactly the same thing, but I could say that maybe should have had a little print on it. One of some of the things that we've done, we have, I think, over the, in this past year, we, between county funds and cares funds and private donations, put out about $151 million helping small businesses, helping renters, helping property owners. So I think the county's done a remarkable job. And one of our ventures, we put out about $11 million to provide stipends to people who are, were not helped by either the state or federal government's actions. So I'm pretty proud of what the county has done. One of the difficulties of doing like a stipend of to individuals, you really can't, as far as I know, you can't really use, you know, money. It's, it's, it's called, that would be called a gift to public funds. You have to raise money privately. And, you know, we are a big county. And we have a lot of need. For example, I was, before the call, I was saying that, telling Jeremy Dennis that I'd met with a group of farmworkers and I do this provide, you know, periodically to find out what they need and how the county can be of help. And at the same time, we have farmworkers and people who are very low income in, in North Fair Oaks. So we, we do a lot through our core agencies. We provide, right now, we have a fund of about $47 million to end rent debt for people making less than $80,000 a year. So I would put up our numbers and our help that we've given to low-income folks against any city and any county. I think we've done exceptional.
Sounds great. Thanks, John.
Yeah, I think, I think the county has done exceptionally well, taking care of the people on the margins. Jeremy, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Through the Chair Supervisor Horstley, it's been six months since the CZU Lightning Complex Fire that certainly affected much of your district. And I was wondering if there were any, any thoughts or ideas that you wanted to share that came out of that? Maybe, you know, lessons learned or any other experiences that you wanted to share with us tonight?
Yeah, there were a couple. In fact, you and Kevin from Woodside, we talked about things like, we were, at one time thinking about sirens. We thought, no, they'll drive everybody nuts because you have to practice them once a month. And everybody'd be wondering about, what are these sirens going off? We didn't think that would work. We did look at cameras and I know it's on Cal Fire. We are looking for sites to put cameras, basically like a fire watch. And I think that has the potential of being relatively successful in the sense that if you can spot a fire before it gets very big, I think we have a pretty good shot at knocking it down. The other thing we did is that Fire Department came across an app developer and they called it Zone Haven. And originally they said this Zone Haven would help with evacuations. And so we put between myself and Supervisor Canep, we put about 300,000 or 400,000 into the development of this. And it turns out that this is a really fabulous system that is a system of being able to help the both the police and firefighters know, you know, there's just incredible amount of information about particular zones. And it helps them with evacuation. So we used this in a CZU fire and used it to evacuate 80,000 people without a single injury. So, so, you know, so that development of that system, and I think it's going to end up going statewide. That system is so good in terms that it shows all the roads in and out, where if you're going to, where you would have to block it to block people from coming in and how you would have to, or how you would bring people out. Also gives you information about people who are not mobile. It might give you information about if you have, for example, a border care facility, if you have a restaurant, if you have a gas station. It just has all the demographic information of by region, by specific zones, incredible system. So you ought to have your fire agency explain how, how it works. It really is, it's a great tool. It's not the only thing, and I think we'll have to keep on looking for, you know, newer and better ways of protecting ourselves. I think we're going to have to look at, somehow we're going to have to help homeowners with basically creating safe zones around their houses. And as you know, it's difficult, you know, for example, in my own house, we have two maples that are really close to the house. We cut one down because it was too close to the house. It's painful to do because it was a lovely tree and it gave wonderful shade. People are going to have to do that if you want to make yourself and your home safe.
I had to cut down a huge pepper tree right by the house. It shaded an entire room. I think we have, do we have, oh, Jeff. I think we have, do we have, oh, Jeff Als.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to concur with you Supervisor on Zone Haven. We've actually gotten a few demonstrations of it locally and it is it's 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 going to be a really important tool for us moving forward. So thanks for for your role in helping that move forward. I also was just gonna, you mentioned the Cordilleras facility that's being refurbished, I believe. I just wanted to point out and thank you for I actually came across that project because it was an entrance in our PCE's all electric building challenge along with the office building that's going in next to the at the at County Center. I just wanted to thank you and the board for for taking the lead on all electric building. And, you know, we've we're working on some efforts to basically sort of decarbonize the county, you know, just take these things countywide. And you've been supportive and I look forward to working with you more on that.
Well, I will say one thing that county government never, we never, well, in government, we never like to admit mistakes. But our first, our first building, it was going to be a a net energy zero and and the the design that the architect came up with was really complicated. And a project that was supposed to be 100 million turned out to be 200 million. So we had to say, tell the architect goodbye. We had to start all over again and come up with a different plan because the building was a marvelous architectural marvel. It was going to be a beautiful facility, but it was just too expensive to build. And it looked like it was going to be way too expensive to maintain. And so we discarded it. We're going to come up with a different facility for a newer county office building. And the really exciting thing about it, it's going to be essentially it's a newer wood facility instead of steel. So we're going to use less concrete and steel, which would of course use less energy. I think they call it compressed laminated wood. The same strength as as steel. But one of the reasons we wanted to do that is because San Mateo County, even though we are the center of Silicon Valley, we have 70% of open space, marvelous redwood forest. And so we wanted to kind of highlight both the fact that we are Silicon Valley. And that's why we do the net energy zero and to also highlight the fact that this is a beautiful county of open space.
Yep. Thank you. I think that we have exhausted the questions and I think it's probably a good time to stop. So I really want to thank Dawn for visiting us tonight. If our residents would like to contact you, what's can you put, could somebody put the email address in the chat?
Yeah, I could do. I guess, yeah, I could do that. I'll I'll be happy to do that.
All righty.
Just have to find the chat. Here we go.
And Mayor Durbin will make sure tomorrow in in the weekly message to share that information as well.
So thanks again for visiting us and I will see you probably next week. And any residents who want to see Dawn, he's always around.
Okay. Thanks for the opportunity to join the council this evening.
All righty. Bye bye.
Bye.
Our second presentation is about the San Mateo County Resource Conservation District. And Jeremy is going to introduce our special guest.
Thank you, Mayor Darren, members of the council. It's my pleasure to introduce Kellex Nelson, the Executive Director of the San Mateo County Resource Conservation District. I'll let her explain what that is. That's why she's here tonight, but I wanted to tell you a little bit about Kellex. Kellex has been with the RCD for 15 years. So she is a wealth of knowledge on conservation and networking related issues and bringing people together to talk about these important topics. Kellex, previous to that, had worked in a couple of different environmental related fields, but there's always a tidbit about Kellex's past that I love to share is that she drove a truck for a year cross country, an 18 wheeler about 20 years ago. So I think that tells you a little bit about about Kellex. I've known Kellex for a very long time. I consider her a friend. She is one of the most optimistic human beings you'll ever meet, always brings a spirit of can do to every project that that she works on and working with the supervisor Supervisor Horsley, who succeeded my former boss Supervisor Gordon, really cracked some important nuts out on the coast in the last number of years related to flooding issues and other issues. So with that, Kellex, I'd like to turn it over to you. Welcome tonight.
Thank you. That was a fun introduction, Jeremy. Thank you all for having me. I'm really looking forward to having a chance to to get to know you all. My my guess is that the Resource Conservation District in our county or the RCD is probably the best form of local government that you've never heard about. And so I just want to kind of get a sense as I'm talking, can you tell me how many of you have actually heard of the Resource Conservation District or RCD before? Okay. Okay, a couple. And now put your hand up if you actually know what that is. One. Okay. Okay, a little bit. Okay. Thank you. So I love talking about the RCD, so I'm really happy to be here. And if you ever want me to make a more formal presentation or PowerPoint, I'd be happy to. But I thought I would just do a quick introduction to our district. So we're a local special district that includes inner boundaries portions of your town. And and we also work outside our boundaries. We're unable to do that under statute. So we have addressed concerns that are beyond our current boundaries. We we've been around for over 80 years. We were formed as a response to the Dust Bowl crisis. When the the government, the national government realized that soil is actually a precious resource and part of our national security and our food security, et cetera. Fast forward 80 years, our work is has really evolved. And so we exist in partnership with the Federal Natural Resources Conservation Service. And we're this form of government that exists county by county. There's about 100 of them in the state of California, about 3,000 nationally. They're in almost every county and a lot of people have never heard of us. But what we do is we help people help the land. We work where we're invited. We work in partnership and we're this really interesting nimble, hyper local form of government that addresses local priorities. And those priorities regarding natural resources have evolved over time. Right? So the the priorities that we're focused on currently is we, our our program areas are wildlife, which is basically working to restore habitat for threatened and endangered species. Water resources. So we help conserve water, develop water resources and protect water quality and address water pollution. Agriculture, we were formed by farmers and we help agriculture be locally viable and be part, we help farmers and ranchers be environmental stewards. Forest health and wildfire is our newest area of focus. And that is was obviously addressing a real need of our community and I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail moment. And then the the final program area is climate. And so we work to help natural and human communities be more resilient to climate change that is here and is coming. But we also help to mitigate climate change, not just by reducing emissions, but literally by drawing greenhouse gases down from the atmosphere and storing them in soils and vegetation from which they came to be part of the solution to climate change. So those are our basic program areas. And I think that that I think what is also kind of interesting about the RCD is that we work property by property where we're invited, but we also work at scale. We work at watershed scale, at food shed scale. We work at the scale of where fires go. We work at the scale of where critters migrate, you know, removing dams from creeks and restoring tens of miles of passage for endangered fish. But also I think what is really cool about our work and one of the things I love about it is that we work at the intersection of people in the natural world where we recognize that working lands are businesses. We recognize that people live here. We recognize that it is not enough to fence off tracts of land and consider conservation done. Those lands need to be managed and that people use water and that people are here to stay for a while. So so our job is to work in this intersectional space and find these solutions that work for that are sustainable for people in the in the landscape where where farms, fish and people can thrive. And there's no shortage of projects that are large and small in which we do that. Some of you may be familiar with the flooding that happened regularly in the community of Pescadero and pretty much the only road into town. And so we worked after decades of hearing that that was impossible. There's nothing you could do about it. It was either that you took care of the natural preserve or you cared about the people in the community and you had to choose one. And we found a path through that actually removed the a barrier, the sediment under the road that had completely filled a creek and was causing chronic flooding of the town was also a barrier to ancestral migration of endangered coho salmon to an entire watershed. And furthermore, removing that dredge material, we could use it to patch in certain parts of Pescadero marsh that were causing annual massive die offs of threatened steelhead trout. So we're able in one project with a number of partners to address flooding, community safety, resilience to climate change, resilience to sea level rise, migration corridors, water quality, all while honoring the the farm that was nearby and what its business needs were and community input, et cetera. That's 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 how we roll is with a lot of input from people who have very diverse interests. We're literally formed to work across the aisle of what is nowadays considered novel is what we were formed to do. We also do things like carbon farming where we work with farms and ranches to reconfigure and reimagine their the way that they work that protects or maybe improves their yield and understands their business operation while all through the lens of how much carbon can be drawn down from the atmosphere and stored in the vegetation and the healthy soils. Our last to date, we've completed 11 of these site specific carbon farm plans in San Mateo County that when implemented will draw down 1,400 tons of carbon dioxide equivalent annually, which is the equivalent of over 1,800 acres of forests per year or 302 cars on the road per year. So I had to look at another screen to remember those numbers. And then we're involved with things like water quality monitoring and reducing pollutants coming off the landscape and helping people be stewards of those lands for beneficial outcomes. And then one of the things that I think is most germane to your town is the work that we're doing to manage forest health and reduce the risk of catastrophic fire. So in partnership with the Fire Safe Council, which under contract from the county, we also coordinate the San Mateo County Fire Safe Council. And many RCDs actually around the state coordinate their Fire Safe Councils in service to the folks who lead those councils. So through the Fire Safe Council, we run the chipping program that comes to neighborhoods and helps residents reduce their fuel loads by hauling off the 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 branches and vegetation that they've removed. But we also in partnership with the Resource Conservation District in Santa Cruz County, received $5.3 million from Cal Fire to to conduct fuel load reduction projects on about 1,000 acres of land. Two that are closest to you are Hutter and Wonderlit County Parks, about 400 acres of fuel load reduction and forest health improvements. Our work with with fire is both to reduce the risk of catastrophic fire, to help people have egress when there is a fire and that's in support of the firefighting agencies. And also unfortunately, after the catastrophic fires last summer, we were called upon to help people recover from that fire, from catastrophic fire. We were the Soil Conservation District and we were formed. So things like mudslides, debris flows, creeks, erosion is very much in our wheelhouse. And also, one of the things I think very few people know is that the reason that one of the main reasons that the fire didn't advance north was the work that we were doing on Old Hall Road in San Mateo County Parks. When the fire started to get there, we had crews that were repairing that road that were certified by Cal Fire. And we partnered with County Parks and Cal Fire instantly to repurpose those crews and stop the fire from advancing north past Old Hall Road. I think that's another well kept secret that most people don't know that that is why the fire didn't jump across and and march north. By the way, we're not a firefighting entity. We happen to be there with crews and that's not what we plan to do in the future. But I think it speaks more to the fact that we're a very nimble form of local government that can respond to the need when it exists. So that's a little bit of an overview of of who we are. And and to Jeremy's point, I've known Jeremy for a long time. He's one of the people who actually introduced me to this work back when he was a legislative aide for then Supervisor Rich Gordon and and helped introduce me to this work in San Mateo County. Actually, I think back then I was working for Peninsula Open Space Trust, maybe. So that was a while ago. So anyway, I love what the RCD does and I wanted to introduce it to you. I thank you, Jeremy and Mayor Derwin for inviting me to be here. And I'd be happy to come back at some future point, show you videos of the work or photos of the work or do a PowerPoint or focus on any of our program areas. But this level of introduction, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I would love you to come back, but it's not just my decision. Jeremy, do you have a hand up?
I do. You know, one of the, there were a couple of things that I just wanted to highlight. You know, first, the the RCD now has the ability to work in our community because of its sphere of influence changes. So this is new to us. And when I heard from Kellex about this, I was certainly excited. You can see the breadth of the programming that certainly applies to town, but in particular, the work that they're doing around fire that I was very intrigued by. The RCD supports Fire Safe, San Mateo County and what they do. So they're obviously an incredible resource for what we are doing and what we're going to do in the future. I've already had a couple of conversations with Kellex and her staff about what the town has done and what the town is planning to do. And certainly in the future, we hope to engage the RCD on all manner of wildfire preparedness, resiliency, mitigation and the like. But I wanted to point that out in in particular, but yeah, Kellex, you are will obviously be invited back for future presentations. And I hope the council has some questions for Kellex.
Thanks, Jeremy. Counsel, do you have questions?
Well, in lieu of a question, if I if I may add that one of the things that we always want to know is what your priorities are. And so if we know what your priorities are, there are priorities. And one of our staff who manages our forest health and and fire resiliency program, she assists Cal Fire in the coastal regional prioritization effort. So the the state of California broke broke the state up into regions to develop like regional prioritization for projects that would be developed and be competitive for funding that comes from the state. And so it's important for us to know what projects might be priorities for you so that we can help queue them up to be implemented and to be successful and provide technical assistance. Similarly, one of the things, there were a number of people from town who participated historically in our our livestock and land program that provided technical assistance to equestrians to help them manage their manage their property in ways that were beneficial to horse health while also beneficial to the watershed health and to water quality. That was a big area of engagement with a lot of people from from your town in the past. And then also we removed the lowermost barrier to fish passage on San Francisco Creek, the Bondi Weir that helped fish migrate up into the watershed historically. So we've been involved also in habitat restoration and fish migration. So all of these were things that we did that were responses from people asking us and telling us that this was their priority. So by all means, let us know what you want.
Absolutely, we will. I see one are there, I will leave the my colleagues for a second while they think. To our public, Christy Corley.
Hi, thank you for being here and thank you for everything that you do. It's wonderful work. I did want to, you asked a question, what could we use more of? And I'm looking at the wildfire cameras up on the ridge. and I'm not seeing a ton of them. I guess if we were to get funds, I would just ask for more wildfire cameras to help protect Portola Valley. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Christy. I'm bringing it back to my colleagues and I
You have a couple more questions for hands.
Okay, now I see some hands. Lucy Neely.
Hi there, council, staff and Kellex. Kellex, thanks for your presentation. I'm super stoked on the work you do. I'd love to talk to you for hours and I'll definitely be in touch. One question that I had right now, I'm stoked on the carbon sequestration work you're doing and also the firework. And I'm just wondering, do you weave those together? Like, in the approach to firework in San Mateo County, do you approach that with the goal of carbon sequestration also? And if so, how does that happen?
Yes. In fact, we have for those, just for Hutter and Wonder Lake projects, I can, I don't have the number handy, but we actually have quantified how much that will sequester carbon. So I'd say if there were a Venn diagram of forest health and fuel load reduction in forests, there's a pretty significant overlap between what makes forests healthy and what makes them more fire resilient. And typically, healthy forests are ones that sequester more carbon, let alone the fact that catastrophic wildfire is a huge emission of carbon, right? So there's like what you're potentially preventing, but also what happens when you have healthy soils and the right growth of like larger trees rather than a bunch of smaller spindly trees and little brushy invasive exotic species and that sort of thing. So carbon sequestration is a big part of forest health. And then what was your other question?
I think, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Lucy. Judith Murphy.
Thank you. Hi, Kellex. I'd like to ask, it's a major issue right now in our town and all up and down the peninsula. This increased concern for fire safety has led to some remarkably overzealous clearing that's paid not nearly enough attention to habitat, erosion, seasonal concerns, et cetera. And I'm wondering if your district has in the past, with your work, created any guidelines about how to balance the the fire safety and the habitat and the regrowth, et cetera?
Yeah, this, I mean, this is a pretty significant statewide and nationwide conversation, right? So I think, I think what is particular about the RCD is that we are a conservation district. We're rooted in conservation. I think the fact that often people who are really concerned about fire safety don't trust the fact that we're about conservation and people who are about conservation don't trust the fact they're about fire safety is probably a good thing because it means that we are finding the balance. So there's a few different answers to that question. One is that, of course, we have to go through the secret process in all of the permitting that is, that considers environmental impacts of this work. But the other is that we are actively seeking to build forest health through fuel load reduction projects. I think there are times that you do have to break a few eggs to make an omelet. Like, I'll be honest about that. And we see that in restoration too. You know, where you remove vegetation to, as part of a project to restore hydrology for wetlands, for example. So there can be temporary impacts and I think those can be really disturbing and scary and look really disruptive. And so it's important to look at the long term. Are you restoring habitat and ecosystem function and process? And the long term, even if there are temporal impacts, and how significant are those impacts? But the short answer to your question is, yeah, we do think about it. I don't know any absolute replicable, you know, standards that apply to every project, but I know that it's something that we have to consider. We have to document. We have to be able to explain and defend for our permits and it's something that we consider in project design and development. But I want to acknowledge that there have been some projects, I've seen them, that have left areas as a wasteland that can accelerate erosion, can can be invitations for invasive species to take over and not have habitat benefits. And that when those invasive species really take over, then they can increase the fire risk for communities. These projects have to be thought through well. But by the same token, we need to get them done and we, I think that we have to make sure that while we're considering the risk of taking action, we're also considering the risk of inaction and making sure that we're moving forward in thoughtful ways. And that's hard and requires a lot of community conversation.
Thank you.
Mayor Derwin, through the chair, Kellex, if you are, I'm on the spot a little bit, but the Conservation Committee, Judy Murphy is the Chair of the Conservation Committee and I would love if you or your staff came to a future Conservation Committee meeting and talked about these and other issues so I can coordinate with you. Okay, great.
Yeah, I would love to. Judy, you might also be interested, some of you might be interested in, I spent much of the last year actually on detail for about ninety percent of my time with Natural Resources Secretary Wade Crowfoot. He's the Secretary for California of Natural Resources. Because I also participate in a group called the California Landscape Stewardship Network that covers about forty percent of California and California's geography. And we're looking at envisioning what stewardship of our lands looks like in the future and understanding that we've got wicked thorny problems that are happening at a scale and a pace that we have not seen before and that our current systems and ways of thinking do not work. And that when it comes to climate change, winning slowly is losing. And so what are the systems changes? What are the big thinking systems changes that we need to address the pace and scale of the threats that we're facing? And it requires a different way of thinking. So I spent much of the last year on an initiative called Cutting Green Tape, where we explored how the unintended consequences of environmental regulations that were intended to stop, and they're very effective at stopping bad actions, but unfortunately, they have a broad net that also catches beneficial actions. And so how do we ensure that environmental regulations don't stop environmental restoration from happening effectively and efficiently? And so we went through a year-long process with about a hundred and fifty stakeholders from around the state and developed a set of fourteen recommendations for how the state can have sort of right-fitting regulations that enable environmental restoration to happen while minimizing the unintended consequences of what happens when you're doing that work. So Judy, if you're or anybody else is interested in that, I can maybe send Jeremy the link to that report into that process.
Yeah, we would really like to see that link. Okay, are there any other questions from attendees or panelists? Seeing none. Kellex, this has just been absolutely fascinating. And you are totally fitting into our ethos here in Portola Valley and we want to have you back.
I'd love to. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And I have one message for you from a friend. Alex Von Felt says Brutus says hi.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much.
Alrighty. Okay, that is the end of our presentations for tonight. And now we have to move on to the more boring things, including the consent agenda. The consent agenda is generally voted on by our council unless somebody will just pull something. But any member of the public may comment on the consent agenda before we vote and any member of the public may speak for up to three minutes per item. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to something on our consent agenda tonight? Okay. Counsel, would anyone like to pull something from the consent agenda?
Christie's hand just went up, Mary Ann.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Christie. You've got to be a little quicker. Christie.
Hello, I just wanted to see if we can talk about traffic in Portola Valley on one of the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, which one?
I think it'd be the Neely, but I want to hear your, as elected officials, comments on it.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to comment on the consent agenda? Counsel, would anyone like to pull something from the consent agenda?
Minutes, please.
Okay, minutes. Item number three, anything else you'd like to pull? Okay, is there a motion to approve item four, five, six and seven?
So moved.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Sharon.
Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernicke.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Consent agenda, item number three, minutes. Jeff?
Yeah, oh, sorry, hold on. Red page seven, in the fourth paragraph, Senator Becker talks about Tony Atkins, who's been terrific. I think it should read, and who appointed him to six committees. It says pointed him to, but it should be appointed, A-P-P-O-I-N-T-E-D.
Okay.
And then, red page, oh, red page eleven, a little typo, Brandy DeGarmo's name is misspelled.
Okay.
And red page twelve, they misspelled my name twice. Once is a typo, twice is, yeah. Nitpicking, but just thought I'd correct those.
Okay, thank you for those.
And with that, I would, oh, if no one, well, if no one says any comments, but
Since we're talking about this, I did notice one little typo on red page nineteen, in the second line, said we have also, we've also been engaged in wildfire-related issues and support firewire. I think they probably didn't mean the firewire.
Oh, yes.
Fire safe.
I will be happy, but I don't, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, then, may I have a motion to approve the minutes with those changes?
So move.
Second was John. Alrighty, roll call, please, Sharon.
Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernicke.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Moving on to the regular agenda, item number eight is a recommendation by the Planning and Building Director, the annual housing element progress report for last year. And who is going to take this one?
I will, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I know that many of you are familiar with the process, but I wanted to give just a little bit of background in case there's any that are getting up to speed on the housing element. And so the housing element is a required part of the general plan. And part of the housing element is the regional housing needs allocation. And that's what we call RENA. So when you hear people talking about RENA, that's what it's short for. And that's the number of units that the town is required to plan for in each housing element cycle. So we have eight-year cycles under state law and we're in the middle of one right now. And you might have heard that we're starting to plan for the next one that's coming up. So this report is related to the housing element cycle that we're in right now. If you're interested in the housing element cycle that's coming up, there's a link in the staff report that'll take you to the town council's last discussion on this item. And there's also an FAQ on housing elements that's attached to the staff report if you're kind of getting the base information on this process. So what we do is we track progress towards meeting our RENA goals. And we do that by counting the number of net new housing units that we have each year. And we do that through building permit issuance. So we track projects early in the process and we also track them for when they're finalized. But the measure that counts for the RENA is the building permit issuance. So each year, we're required to submit this annual progress report to HCD on forms that they provide. So if you saw those very large spreadsheets that are difficult to read, my apologies, but that's what HCD makes us do. So we've given you the excerpt of those reports for you to see. And so we report using those forms and then we're required to bring it to the legislative body, that's you, the town council. Our town's practice is to also bring it to the Planning Commission. So we brought the report to the Planning Commission last week and they, or on the seventeenth, and they reviewed the report. They asked some clarifying questions. They didn't provide any specific feedback. There was a question about the way that we count some of the lower income units that staff is going to follow up on. But we do feel confident that the way that we're reporting it is consistent with the HCD guidelines at this time. And so in terms of the details of the report itself, many of you are aware that our RENA allocation for this cycle is sixty-four net new units. And that's for the time period of twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three. And so we're reporting on calendar year twenty twenty, which was obviously an unusual year in many ways. We still had good housing production even under those circumstances, but a little bit different form than what we often see. So we had four building permits that were issued for net new housing units. And those were for three accessory dwelling units or ADUs and six units of affiliated housing at the priory. And so those were units that were approved in concept through a master plan, through a CUP, through the affiliated housing program. And then the ASCC reviewed the specific design of it in the previous year. And then the building permit was issued in twenty twenty. And so that includes one deed restricted unit under their conditionally used permit conditions of approval. And so that's a low-income unit. And then the other five units fell within the, we assume are going to be moderate income because they're for the staff and the faculty at the priory. So we worked with them on that in the past. So that brings our total number of net new units for the cycle up to eighty-eight. So we have exceeded the total number of units that were assigned to the town through the RENA process. But the units are allocated across different income categories. And so we've exceeded the very low and the above moderate income categories. And we still have units that are remaining in the low and the moderate income. But I do think that this progress is significant, even in a pandemic year, to have these number of building permits issued for these units. So another part of the annual report is related to the programs that are in the housing element. And some years, there's a lot of activity and action in these programs and other years, not as much. And that is typical to see in an eight-year housing element cycle. We didn't see as much activity in these categories, again, largely due to the pandemic. But some of the council's priorities are expressed here in terms of ongoing priorities and issues. The programs are outlined in the staff report. The updates are similar to what the council saw last year based on the events of twenty twenty, but they include inclusionary housing, affiliated housing, ADUs, which continue to be an important priority. And then some of the smaller programs related to shared housing, fair housing, energy conservation and sustainability, continuing to explore future housing needs and transitional and supportive housing ordinance amendment. So as I mentioned, there are some attachments for people to review and some additional information. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Laura. Colleagues, does anyone have a question? Craig? And then Joe. And then Jeff?
Yes, two questions. The first one is one I've asked before, but if you could just remind us, Laura. The category that we're furthest behind on and not quite on track potentially to hit by the end of the cycle is in the low category, but we're above where we need to be for very low. And so I think we've had discussion in the past with H C D about whether we can bubble up essentially, that if we have units that are too low, whether they count towards those, you know, low. And I think that, you know, the intention of H C D is generally to create units that are accessible. So we're making them more accessible than that presumably ought to be better, maybe, but on the other hand, they may want to balance. So could you tell us about that and whether H C D is going to be okay with kind of where we're at? If we're, if we miss on one of the categories, is that a big deal?
Our understanding continues to be that the different income levels matter, that we are striving, trying to hit our goals in each of the different income categories. And there are some, there's laws that really speak to that in terms of trying to meet the targets in the different areas. And so I think that there is, you know, understanding that providing lower income units is probably beneficial than a lot more higher income units. But I don't think that there's a technical mechanism to be able to get credit for it. In terms of, you know, penalty, you know, we do have information, and Cara can always provide more information about what happens if we don't beat those goals. I think that having eighty-eight total units, you know, with arena of sixty-four, I think is meaningful when H C D and others are looking at our numbers.
And then my other question is, what, what would make the unit, I mean, given that we're missing in that one category? Is there anything that? Actually, I guess it's two-part question. One, are the Stanford units would be in the very low category? Or would some of those fall into the low category potentially based on, I know their application isn't final, but based on what you've seen so far, where does it look like those B M R units would land? And then the other question is, is there anything we can do to, if we, if it makes sense to, to encourage people to, I don't know, put in a full marble bathroom in their A D U to push something from very low into low, so we, we fill all the categories? What kinds of things make a difference there, I guess?
So in regards to the Stanford application, the current proposal has six of the twelve units are the low category. And the other six have not been designated yet, and that will need to be determined through the review and entitlement process.
Okay.
So that's what we know about Stanford so far. In terms of how the units are allocated, we are using the formula the town adopted with the housing element itself. And that was a modification based on a study that was done countywide by twenty-one elements. And so we have continued to use that methodology because we think it is the most sound to continue to use what we have in our approved housing element. But we, you know, we recognize that some dynamics have changed, and so we may now be using assumptions that are not as fresh. And so that is, but it's common situation for cities and towns to be in. And so I think in future years, certainly in the next housing element, we'll be looking at a more rigorous method to allocate those units to the different income categories. And I think it will be more meaningful in the next housing element cycle than it is in this one.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you. There's one unit that was deed restricted. Was there something unique to the circumstances of that unit, or does it suggest that we could actually get more deed restricted units in the future? My first question.
That deed restricted unit was required by the priory C U P. So that is in their conditional use permit. So my assumption, though I don't know for sure, is that the town requested at least one deed restricted B M R unit. And so that's why they provide it.
Okay. And then the other one, the above, above moderate includes market rate housing?
It does.
So we've, in two thousand twenty, we only had one, one permit issued for just a market rate house?
Well, that's only net new units. So it's, we didn't have any new houses built where there wasn't one before. We had.
So one lot, one lot got developed, and okay, okay, all right, that makes more sense. Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions from the council? Are there any questions from the public or comments? Okay. Then I bring it back to the council. Do we, do we need a motion for this?
Yes, you should make a motion, just authorizing staff to submit the report to H C D.
Okay, does anybody want to make any comments, or does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. All second.
Jeff, thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Alfs.
Yes.
Councilmember Wernicke.
Yes.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi. Thanks.
Thank you.
Laura.
Thanks, Laura. Okay, item number nine is a recommendation by the town manager. Amendments to qualifications for planning and architectural and site control commissioners. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor Derwin, members of the council. As you recall, in December, the council made an appointment to the A S C C. That appointment included a number of applicants, one of whom was actually lived in the sphere of influence, but outside the city limits. The current handbook for committees and commissions allows the council to appoint members to both commissions and all the committees who live in the sphere of influence. But during, during those discussions around the time that the A S C C member was appointed, there were some concerns about whether or not it was appropriate to appoint members to the two commissions that oversee land use recommendations and policies in town who lived outside of town limits. So based on the concerns that I heard, I drafted some very basic revisions to the committee handbook that would limit appointments to those two commissions to only residents, not to people who live outside of town limits or in the sphere of influence. Nothing else to add to that and conclude my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Questions from the council? Wow, what a really serene crowd it is tonight. Are there any questions from the public? Okay, coming back to the council, does anyone, okay, what are our thoughts about this?
I have a.
John?
I have a sort of question, commented the comment on red page eighty-three. Where the commission's an advisory committee handbook, it goes into, referring to the old status of this situation. And I don't know if this still applies on the first paragraph, it says the town council may, on a case-by-case basis, waive the town residency requirement. It's not clear that that is applying just for committees, or, well, anyway, I think it maybe is something that ought to be cleaned up. But just wanted to make sure that it wasn't another reason that was left in there.
Through the chair, I left that in there on purpose. I did not amend it to give the council in some extreme circumstances the opportunity to do so. But if the council, I can obviously make some minor tweaks to change that to only refer to committees.
Okay. Are there other questions? I had a question, and now I can't even find it, but where's the language, volunteers for the, okay. So red page seventy-two. At the bottom in red, it says volunteers for the planning commission and the architectural site control commission. She'll live in Portola Valley and no applications from residents of lands in the sphere of influence shall be considered. So Portola Valley includes Ladera, Los Trancos. Now, in the next piece of the sentence, it sort of clarifies it. But do we need to say Portola Valley proper, or should there be any clarification there, or do you feel that the rest of the sentence makes it clear?
I think probably saying town of would clarify that.
No, town.
Yeah.
Okay, so she'll live in the town of Portola Valley. Thanks. Does anybody else have any thoughts or comments on this? I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say that, that, yeah, I think this is sensible. We had sort of talked about it and realized this is the case, so I was happy to see it happen, and I would, I would be happy to make a motion to approve.
If I make, would the council like there to be changes made to the area that John mentioned?
Oh.
Does a council want to keep some limited authority in special circumstances? Or would it be, would it be just easier just to delete that, make it clear in that references for committees only?
Greg?
I think it would be good to keep it in there as it is. You know, I can foresee a potential circumstance where there just are no applicants from within the town. I mean, we haven't seen that over the last couple of cycles, but going back a decade or two, it's probably been the case that there just aren't applicants sometimes. And so I think for the council to have that ability in case of a need to fill a seat would be a good thing to do.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, too. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to cause confusion. But I think it's, I think it's reasonable, straightforward enough.
Yeah, I, I agree with Craig.
Sarah? Do you agree?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, I agree with Craig.
Okay. All right. So again, this is only for A S C C and planning commission committees still can draw from sphere of influence. So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll withdraw my first motion. I'll move that with, with the corrections we've noted here. So clarifying town of Portola Valley, I will move to approve.
Thanks. Craig has seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Alfs.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernicke.
Yes.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Okay. Item number ten is the first of two colleagues' memos. This one's from Vice Mayor Hughes, and it is, you read the correct language. Potential use of open space funds for open space easements. Craig?
Yes, hello colleagues. This is a fairly straightforward thing. It's an idea that occurred to me, came from a few sources. Donations of open source easements to the town. Discussions of the finance committee and open space about how the value of land is going up seemingly faster than we're accumulating money in our open space fund to acquire it. And it occurred to me that there might be a possibility in some cases on some pieces of land of acquiring not the land itself, but of paying owners to dedicate open space easements on their land. And in some cases, they might be thinking of doing that, but costs are prohibitive. They don't want to hire the attorneys and pay the recording fees and so on. And so there might be an opportunity for the town to essentially purchase those easements by paying just enough money to cover the costs, essentially. So there's, there's a number of things that need to be worked through in terms of the details of how that would work and identifying which properties we might want to do that for and so on. For which I would recommend we refer it to the open space acquisition committee to discuss, but to essentially point them in the direction of saying, we think this might be a good idea, and they could hopefully with staff figure out a mechanism for doing that. And I think Cara had identified a couple of issues that we need to work through in terms of how you actually go about some of the mechanical logistical issues of it. But it seems like something that's doable and could potentially get us a lot more bang for our buck for our open space acquisition fund than buying land outright. For which there are just not a lot of opportunities also.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions of Craig? About his memo, his idea? Well, I had a question. Are you, are you, are you proposing that this idea is referred to the open space acquisition committee?
Yes, I think there's some detail that needs to be worked through in terms of, you know, how, how we, I think a big part of it is going to be publicizing it, frankly, trying to find people who might be interested in, in making those donations. But also, you know, potentially targeting that to say, oh, well, we're looking for pieces of land that connect to other pieces of land or connect to existing easements and that sort of thing. Or along trails or wherever it might be. I think there, Cara had, had, had asked a question about whether people expected to have access to the open space land. And so exactly what rights and easement should have in it, I think, might also be part of what the open space committee could, could think about and bring back to us. Whether we want to spend all of the money or just put a limit on it and saying, well, up to a certain amount. That, those sorts of things, I think the open space acquisition committee could kind of chew on and come back to us with a more specific proposal. This, this memo is really just to see whether the rest of you thought it would be worth having the open space committee kind of think in this direction and come up with a more concrete proposal, not to actually do anything imminently.
Right. And have you discussed it with them?
I've discussed it with the chairperson, Terry, briefly, just to sort of say, hey, I've thought about this. Bringing it to the rest of the council, and he seemed interested in the concept. And I think he's sort of penciled in, putting it on their next agenda, if, if, if we do refer to them to talk about it.
Thanks. Right.
Question?
You have a question?
Yeah. Is this something, I mean, are you thinking that we'd sort of just pay kind of the frictional cost, so to speak, of an easement? And are you thinking of this for, so maybe somebody who's, you know, maybe on a fixed income and has limited funds? Or are you thinking of this for anyone? Because some of these, I mean, some easements will carry tax advantages to them, and we could probably do a better job of just advertising, just somebody, somebody could, some people could probably, you know, save themselves some tax burden, but is, I mean, I just don't want, I just don't want it to go to paying, you know, the bills of, legal bills of somebody who can afford them.
Yeah, I think it's really, and I think exactly who and what we offer is something that I think would be good for the open space acquisition committee to digest. I think that, you know, I think a sort of rough guideline, or what I will suggest to them anyway, as they're discussing it, is that we probably don't want to pay more than what the frictional costs are. And, and, you know, even if it were somebody who might pay their own legal bills, but they don't want to go through the hassle of it, it may be that that's enough in the inducement to get an open space easement, then maybe it's worth it, even if, you know, even if they would be able to afford it. You know, it's, it's, I think, having that option out there may shake loose some people who've been thinking about, oh, I don't really ever need to build on that back piece of land I have. And if it's easy for them to put an open space easement on it, they, they might be inclined suddenly to do so where they otherwise wouldn't.
Sarah?
Is there a specific situation or you know, are there specific opportunities that are available right now that has brought this to a head? Or like what?
I, none that I know specifically. It was really brought on by the, the Lipmans recently created an open space easement on their property, and they donated that. We didn't pay anything for it. But that, you know, that combined with a few other things to sort of put this idea in my head, that there may be opportunities out there for people who might be interested in something like that. If, if the financial burden and or. Um, might be interested in something like that. Um, if, if the financial burden and or headache or. The, the hassle of going through it were, were taken away. So I don't know many specific opportunities, but that, that would be for the Open Space Acquisition Committee to, um, do their target hunting, um, as they've done in the past, uh, for, for purchasing properties they could. Um, they tend to have their ear pretty close to the ground for people who might be interested in this sort of thing. And just to add a little background to that, I mean, easements like this are, are, are a kind of prime target that the Open Space Committee and, and Post for that matter, sort of. I mean, they, they, they buy things, but they both, you know, all the open space organizations are often looking for easements sort of above and beyond. Just the outright purchases of land. So it's, I mean, it's a, it's a situation we could definitely see happen in the future and then maybe this, maybe this, yeah, just, just sort of. Get somebody to do something they weren't gonna do before.
John?
Yeah, I, I, I. Believe there have been a few situations in the past where. Then opportunities have come up that would have been nice to have it, be able to get a conservation easement. Over a piece of property for trail extensions or for, uh, better, better trail positioning and that kind of thing. Um, but the, the lack of a financial incentive had was, uh, didn't, didn't make people want to do it. I, I think this is, is a really good idea and I do think it ought to be. Discussed by the Open Space Acquisition Committee to try to set some boundaries because I also could imagine. People thinking, oh gee, I can help pay for part of my projects here by just, you know, slapping a conservation easement across the front of my. Lot, which wouldn't necessarily do us any good at all. So, um, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great thing to pursue.
Yeah, I think it's, it's definitely gonna be important for them to sort of lay out. You know, what, what kind of criteria we're looking for in a piece of land, because we don't, we probably don't want to accept a. You know, paying for a, um, a conservation easement on a piece of land that's unbuildable anyway, because it's on a cliff face or something and. Doesn't connect to anything. There's, there's no particular reason we should do that and why waste our money on it? Um, but there may, as you say, be some, some interesting prospects that allow trail extensions or wildlife corridors or whatever other. Compelling reasons there might be to, to go, you know, try and find some of these pieces of land and, and stitch them together.
Okay. Uh, members of the public, I see one hand up. Mary Hefty.
You there? Um, I would like to congratulate you on thinking outside of the box on, on, uh, on conservation. I think it's, uh, it's wonderful idea if it's done right and I totally applaud your getting it through the open space people first. Uh, I have personally have. An interest in finding out what the conservation easements are currently in town. I know on my property and many, uh, properties in Westridge, we have, uh, I have a third, at least a third of my property in conservation easement. Uh, on the deed and, uh, I have asked, uh, the town and, and others. If there's anywhere, there's a record of what the conservation easements are and the pattern of conservation easements throughout the town. Because I, I believe, uh, and I have reason to believe that they were put in. For animal corridors and for habitat conservation. Um, and, uh, I think it would be wonderful for the town. To give us access to what that, those corridors look like as they are, uh, have been planned out and how they are working through our town. Um, and just put it out to you guys that. It, it, I, I've thought of taking it on myself to tell you the truth of, uh, finding out all these deeds and finding out where the easements are, but I sure would love some help. Uh, in doing that because I think it's a very exciting point of how our landscape can be utilized for conservation.
Okay, thanks. Uh, that is an interesting question. Jeremy, do you know if we keep a record of that?
At the top of my head, I don't know that we have a specific record. Um. I, I can check with staff, uh, to see. That would certainly be something that, uh, we could put together over time.
Or, or Cara, do you know if it's possible, can you go to the county and ask them for a list of all of the easements in favor of a particular party? I don't know if that's something you can even. Find easily.
No, I don't, I don't think the, um, the county assessor or county reporter yet has a database that, um, is searchable. Um. Given those parameters, I would say that where I would probably first go is the, the larger subdivisions. Um, as a condition of approval, certainly, um, in, in, when, um. The town was incorporated and the town was granting the subdivisions, um, conservation easements were, um, pretty routine. So, um. You know, we could look at, at all of the large subdivisions, um, in town and, and find some that way.
Eddie? Okay, back to the council. What are your thoughts about this one? Do, is anyone, I mean, I've already heard from. Several people that, that, that this is a good idea. John, correct?
Agree absolutely.
Jeff?
Yes.
You think it's a good idea?
I agree. We should, we should forward it to the Open Space Committee and, uh, and get their, get their input on it, yeah.
Sarah?
I agree.
Okay. Then I think I need a mo- do I need a motion?
Might as well.
I think it would be helpful to have a motion.
So move.
Space Committee knows what the direction is.
Eddie, got it. Um, Jeff made the motion. Second please.
Second.
Second.
John, seconded. Roll call please. Sharon?
Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernicke.
Yes.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi. Thank you for that, Craig.
Yep, and thank you all. I will take this to Open Space.
Item number 11 is another. Colleague's memo. I've never heard this term before, so. It's hard for me to say it. This one is from councilmembers Jeff Alves and John Richards and it is regarding an update on COVID restrictions. On town center indoor access and activities. Who is going to handle this? Jeff or John?
Um, I'll, I'll start. Um, so, you know, last year, last March, obviously, we, we ended up closing, uh, closing Town Hall. To, uh, any in-person business and eventually we're able to, well, it's over time, I've been able to actually transition almost all of our. Work to remote work. Um, staff is now back in the building and, um, they are actually, they're the staff on a kind of a part-time as needed basis. So there's two, the staff's divided into two teams and they're, uh, alternate weeks, but a lot of people I think still work remotely. Jeremy can fill in details here and we just, uh, we just talked about what, when and, and how. We could go back to sort of having appointments, um, in person at Town Center and. You know, I think we've, our, our emphasis last year was just always on kind of the, the safety and comfort of our staff. We think that really needs to continue to be the priority and so our initial thought is. That we would not want to, you know, we would probably limit, or we, we'd still not allow access, you know, we would still basically be doing all in-person appointments. Um, until staff is fully vaccinated, um, and until, um, we go back into yellow. I mean, uh, the county under orange still discourages indoor meetings of any kind. So we're, I mean. The official, you know, the guidance from the county and states still say that we probably shouldn't be having sort of in-person appointments. And that we should, um. That we should, I, I think, I think what we'd like to do is continue sort of what we're doing right now is just continue to offer to remote services as we've been doing and then consider. In person, um, going forward, again, with the vaccinations and the red, hopefully, hopefully imminent return to yellow. So. Uh, John or Jeremy, if you want to amplify on that or, or correct me, please.
No, I, I agree. That's, uh, sounds about what we discussed and, uh, I think beyond that, the, um. The idea of getting the. Staff back in the, in the office together, I think goes beyond the, um, the. It added convenience to, uh, townsfolk to come in and, and do their business. It also is, uh, the staff is. Is particularly known for working together and, and helping, helping each other out and cooperating intently. So. If they can't really do that, it doesn't make a whole lot more sense than to bring them into the same building and same office, um, until they can. Um, and that really is gonna happen when they're vaccinated. So. Fortunately, it looks like that's maybe moving along quicker and quicker. So hopefully we'll be there before we know it.
Okay, do you have any more to add?
I would add through the chair, you know, we're, we're waiting our turn for vaccinations. Um, all staff is being encouraged, highly encouraged to get vaccinations. There's no mandate to do so. Um, you know, should a member of staff form facing, not wishing to get vaccinated, there's a, a process by which we'll, we'll talk to them about. Their duties and how that looks, at least in the period of time where there's still risk, um, associated with, uh, interactions. Um, and I think just to. Add a little, a little more, um, the, as I understood the subcommittees. Um. Uh, direction or thoughts here is that this would, you know, also include any other town sponsored gatherings such as, you know, our, our meetings. Uh, committee meetings, commission meetings, um, the use of the facilities, uh, by, for rentals and the like until we're in a, a different place. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Okay, questions from the council? Okay, I have a question. So we're not just talking about when the staff's coming back. We're also talking about when we'll have in-person. Council meetings, planning commission meetings, conservation committee meetings, all that stuff, correct?
Yes.
And the same principles apply?
Um, well, for, for staff participation, I'd say, yeah, at least, I mean, definitely, you know, everyone vaccinated. Uh, ballots back in the yellow. You know, we, we talked a little bit about meetings, public meetings in particular, and, you know, we were thinking. I mean, I, I. I will suggest, and I think, you know, committee members should, should have some say on this, but I just, I would suggest that the committee members work quite well over Zoom. Um, so that we might, there might be a point where we consider bringing council meetings back, um, and maybe commission meetings, just because I think they make, I think there's a little, there's an argument to bring those back in some form in person. As we figure out how to do kind of this, the hybrid meeting, I don't think we're ever gonna get away from people participating remotely, so we have to figure out how we're gonna do that. Um, I just think, I think we're, I think that, that ship has sailed and we're just, that's the, the future is, is always going to include some aspect of this. But, um, you know, we thought that the, probably the council and commission meetings were the priority and the committee meetings could very well just continue for the, for the future on, on Zoom. We, we thought that, it seems to work pretty well. So that was my, that was our thought on it. I'd love to hear other people's thoughts on that.
Okay. Are there other thoughts?
If I may, Mayor Derwin, the, the other thing that I think came up during the conversations the subcommittee had was just related to, um, yeah, there's no way to. Uh, you know, we're, we're not gonna be requiring members of the committees to get vaccinated, uh, or members of the public, but there's gonna be a threshold point where. Um, we can reasonably say that a certain percentage of the population has been vaccinated. And at that point, it makes sense to open up our, our facilities in a way that would be safer, if you will. Um, you know, until that time, our facilities, if people go and they haven't been vaccinated or have other issues, our, our facilities could be contributing to people getting COVID even as things improve. So I wanted to add that element.
Well, these conversations are going on in other cities. Right now.
I think, um, you know, I, I guess as, as I was reviewing it, I was thinking more about the staff and the operations of Town Center and I think that what's being proposed there makes total sense. Um. I think it gets murkier and more complicated once you go out to volunteer committees and all of that. So I'm, I'm not quite sure, to be honest, what I think about that aspect yet. But, um, as far as like the very speci- specific, um, you know, town situation with staff members, I think what you guys have proposed makes sense.
Okay.
Mary, and I'm actually just curious, have you heard, you know, is there a consensus out there among other jurisdictions or other people talking about doing what we're doing or doing something different?
Uh, no consensus and I.
No one, no one knows. Okay.
No one. Hybrid models, that's all I've heard. Hybrid models, not, I mean, for council meetings. As far as staff, I'm not sure. I don't know what's happening with staff. Um, are there? Members of the public who have comments or questions? Kristy?
Thank you. I was just, from our perspective of being a resident. Is there ever any way we could sit outside the front door and look at documents and then hand them back to you? Cause we're, we're outside and we're touching something, but we know it's more. Transmitted by air. So. I'm, I'm finding myself having to pay a lot of money per page or per project, however you want to think about it, to look at things. But I don't really need them. I just want to glance through things and hand them back. Can you discuss what you think about that?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have any comments about that. I mean, do, my, do my colleagues have a comment?
Can I ask what projects here, I mean, what kind of projects are we talking about?
Um, actually, I've never seen a draft EIR, so I wanted to look at the town's past EIR of something. So I get an idea, what is an EIR? What does it, it look like? Do I have to go to another town and get it or where do I look at these things of past projects from the town?
A lot of those should be in submission packets for previous planning commission or ASEC meetings. So you can probably get them from the agenda packets for those meetings, Kristy.
Well, I'm actually just, yeah, I'm asking for it, but I got. You know, 53 pages for $53. That's a dollar a page and then in, in the. What you charge is normally 30 cents. So, but during COVID, it's gonna cost me more. I, I'm running into issues just to look at things.
Well, I think until we're fully operational with everybody in the office, it's, it's gonna be tough. I think it is.
Well, I think it's just, we all have to be able to access information without going broke too.
Yeah. Judy?
If, if I could through the chair, um, a, a lot of the information is available online. Um, so that is, is one option. If you don't want to actually. Have a hard copy of a document, you could, you could certainly, um, search online. And you can also ask for a, a Public Records Act request and, and staff will be happy to help you. Um, uh, and, and provide you with electronic documents. That's typically the way. Um, Public Records Act requests these days are administered. So, um, you know, we can just supply electronic copies of, of particular documents. So, um, I don't believe we are. Seeing any, um, requesters actually come to Town Hall. Um. As, as just a matter of, of practice. At this point.
Through the chair, the, the, Christie's requested a number of documents and some of which were much older. They weren't available electronically. We. Needed to send them out for copy. Um, so there's a cost associated to that, but that we could recover. Um, so, um, where we've been able to provide them electronically, we have, when, when we haven't been able to, we've, we've sent them out.
Cool.
Judy?
Um, I have two things. One is, um, Conservation Committee, we have assumed now that. Uh, the restrictions are lightening up, that if we have a subcommittee of two or three or four members. We might begin meeting outside masks and at a distance. Is there any reason we can't be doing that given this?
I will defer to council, but I assume that if you're volunteers and, and you, you guys want to meet in person, that you can, you can do that. I'd say, I'm guessing that for a Brown Act meeting, we probably still need to make it available to the public via Zoom, but if you guys are meeting as a subcommittee, then I.
No, it's a subcommittee, but it's.
Right, right.
But it's obviously, it's nonetheless town business. So I just wanted to make sure that this proposal that you're talking about now doesn't limit that.
I, okay. I don't think so and.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And then part two of that is, uh, as for reopening the town center. From what you said, if you have one or two staff members that, um, refuse vaccination. Does that mean that the town center reopening will be postponed indefinitely?
Through the chair, no.
No.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I should, I should amend that to say, we should amend that to say people, their staff is vaccinated or has declined to vaccination.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, that's, that's a fair point.
To get, just to give that a little, a little color. So, um, what I've discussed with staff at CARA, very helpful in preparing the, the policy was that, um, you know, should we have members of staff who do not wish to vaccinate? That we would look at what tasks they perform and modify their duties as needed during a period of time where, um, you know, there may be issues, particularly if there's forward-facing staff or otherwise. So far, no, no issues. If anything comes up, oh, speak to the mayor and vice mayor about it.
Great, thank you. Okay. Back to the council.
Mayor Derwin?
Yes.
Uh, Betsy Morgan Thaler? Had her hand up. Oh wait. It gets down now.
Betsy, did you want to speak? Okay, I guess not. Okay, back to the council. Um, let me start with, so Jeff and John wrote the report. So I think I know how they feel. How about you, Craig?
I think it sounds like the right plan.
Okay. And Sarah, you've already commented that you feel it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. And I agree with my colleagues. So is there a motion?
Do we need a motion for this? Or was it, it didn't?
Did for the other one.
Okay, um, I will, um, I'll move the council approve our colleague's memo.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Alves?
Hi.
Councilmember Wernikoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Richards?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes?
Hi.
Mayor Derwin?
Hi. Great. And now we are to item 12, council liaison committee and regional agency reports. Let's start with John.
Okay, uh, had the planning commission meeting last week and part of what went on already. See, discussion about Fort Talavet Road, Fire Station Eight. Discussion of options for zoning, whether or not there was a, an opportunity, a, a need to change the, make a change to the zoning code to include a reference and definition of public building in the R1 zone. Apparently it already exists in the RE zone, which is most of the town. But that's an ongoing discussion. It was very widely supported by pretty much everyone who spoke and there's, uh, they presented a redlined plan showing revision of the driveways and parking to satisfy some of the neighborhood complaints, which was fairly well received. This will be coming to us if there is a zoning change and we'll be going back to the ASCC as well for their final review once they finish the plans. See. That was the main item on the agenda. And then they, Laura gave them the same element, housing element update that we just, so it's that. Then last night we had Conservation Committee meeting. Uh, where Jeremy did presentation on PV donates program and see, a long, long oral communication discussion of the situation of the tree clearing over at at Sequoia's, not a discussion, it was oral communications. And then there was discussion of several projects. One at City Five Possum Lane that has considerable amount of tree removals proposed that went into a long, long discussion, mostly supported by the neighbors. Sort of a philosophical discussion on the, on the committee, based on how do you, what do you recommend in terms of what determines whether or not they should be removed? Is it a conservation issue or not? Or, you know, so anyway, it's a, it was a long discussion. I don't know that it was fully resolved, but I expect it will be at some point and that was it.
Thanks. Oh, Sarah.
Um, let's see. I had Creative Arts or Cultural Arts met. They decided tentatively for their event that's going to be some sort of renewal concept. They're looking at mid to later September at this point for that, for a variety of reasons. And then they are in process of planning a youth photo exhibit. Have a date, uh, May 21st. And flyers are circulating to the schools and it will be at town center and viewing will be TBD pending what's going on with COVID rules at that time, but at a minimum through windows and outdoors. And they also have an author's event that they're brainstorming right now. Sequoia's, I, I now have a monthly with Rob and this may be old news to those of you that aren't as new as I am, um, just about their master planning. That's going on there. And he shared that as part of it, there's new amenities. Obviously the workforce housing that we've heard about for some time and possibly some new senior housing as part of it. So all on that property. So that was the news, the piece of news out of that. There wasn't the meeting of the website subcommittee, finance subcommittee continues to meet weekly. You know, last time we talked, I think it, the, we had to hope that by this point, it was, this would be two weeks after, um, you know, the meeting on the eighth. And I think there was an expectation that there would be progress on the core financial system. And based on what I heard this week from Jeremy, I, doesn't sound like we're there yet. And so to me, you know, that continues to be a concern. Um, I also learned, you know, that we, we paid the full implementation fee as well as the, um, you know, subscription for the past year. Um, and we still don't have a working system. So I just wanted to mention that as a, a, an additional concern. So I, Jeremy, I suspect will touch on this in his manager's report, but, uh, those are my updates on that.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Let's see, Jeff?
Okay, um, we had a, last Thursday, we had a fire committee, the ad hoc fire committee met. I guess so, so we, uh, Megan Koch replaced Dana Breen as the ASCC member on the committee. We got some updates from the committees. Uh, I guess the main ones just being just outreach to some of our larger, one of our, one of the initiatives the committee has come up with is just sort of this work with larger properties to get sort of come up with sort of holistic property management plans. And they've actually outreach, I think they've reached out to and had confronted issues about five of the 10 large property owners, something in that range. So they're making progress on that. Uh, the fire marshal gave an update on some proposals. He's been working with the committees on. And we had a couple of really good presentations, one from Mid Penn on their work with getting, trying to sort of, they're working in Wendy Hill in particular. And a little bit on their Hawthorns and just, just, um, it was there, one of their botanists talking about just sort of how they, their approach to all of their properties. And they, they have, I think 11 properties in the, in the, in the area. So they talked about, it was just, just their sort of immediate and long-term plans on both Wendy Hill and the Hawthorns to, to create things like shaded fuel breaks and manage to hopefully the coyote brush. And then PG&E gave a presentation as well on their, um, their work on wildfire preparedness. Those are both informative. And then Jeremy gave several updates or sort of ongoing things that we've, the committee's been working on for a while. I'm not sure if there's anything you wanted to highlight from that, Jeremy.
I'll pull up, uh, please continue, Jeff. I'll pull up the agenda.
Yeah, and I actually, unfortunately that night I missed the nature and science committee meeting. I need to get an update from them on the, they're still working on their speaker series. I did get an update on when they're actually going to roll out their first event, but hopefully later. I guess at this point it might be early April, but, uh, oh, I'll have to get an update from them on that. Uh, that's, that's all I have right now.
Mayor Derwin, would you like me to provide some additional updates to wildfire preparedness committee?
Yes, please provide some additional updates to the wildfire preparedness meeting.
Thank you. So the updates that came from staff included the, uh, the following. The, um, town staff, uh, we've had conversations with, um, the insurance commissioner's office over the last several months regarding a variety of issues. And, um, we are anticipating a meeting, uh, between the mayor and the vice mayor and the insurance commissioner a little later this year. Just to discuss our experiences, what we're learning and how that office can, can be of help to our residents. I, I am expecting the insurance commissioner to be reaching out to other cities in the area too, um, on this. I think we've, we've helped push that along for them, which has been great. I gave a quick update on the virtual emergency operations center. Um, we hope, uh, actually been agendized for next week, going to the emergency preparedness committee with some thoughts on a tool that we're proposing, home hardening ordinance that's been, um, we're, been, we're gone for a number of months, uh, should be coming to the, um, by, uh, commissions next month. There's actually holding a meeting tomorrow with members of the wildfire committee, a conservation committee and my staff and PG&E to talk about some trees that, um, are in their easement, utilities man in town that could be candidates for removal. Uh, the fire marshal will be there as well. So we want to coordinate that effort. Talked about PV donates. Uh, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, back to the council who hasn't.
Sorry, Jeremy reminded me of one thing. Um, we talked about PV donates and one point that, that, so the, the, the fire committee has actually been exploring the possibility of fundraising for some sort of larger fundraising for some communal work on, on fire removal in certain parts of town. And they, they're concerned about the PV donates program was just they didn't want it to interfere with their fundraising purchases. And I feel like the PV donates is a much smaller targeted thing and probably doesn't, I, I don't feel like there's a lot of overlap between those two, but it was, it was a fair point to consider that they're, they're just trying to figure out what's going to work with this larger, you know, sort of funding for trying to, trying to clear brush from certain places with, maybe people can't do it themselves. So.
Craig?
Yes, let's see, I had no particular order. There was ASCC on Monday. New house project on Westridge, six 27 Westridge. Nice project, beautiful piece of land, lots of oak trees. Um, and the applicant was doing initial conceptual design review. So this is something we used to do back when I was on ASCC from time to time, when there were sort of bigger, more complex projects, they'd come before they really had fully developed set of plans to bounce things off the ASCC and say, this is what we're thinking. Get early reaction. So those can then be incorporated into the design rather than drawing up a full set of plans, spending a lot of money and then running into issues. So I think it was pretty successful, um, bringing that back. Um, I think Laura and staff did a good job of, of getting just about the right amount of detail. There was some commentary that it might be useful to have a little bit more on the landscaping, at least at a sketch level, um, to say, you know, we're thinking of roughly planting these kinds of things here and taking these trees out and that kind of stuff. But overall, I think was, was much appreciated by the ASCC and, and the applicant and gave them a good, good amount of feedback from the committee on, or the commission on what they were thinking about the project, um, which was generally positive and supportive. A trails committee meeting. They talked about a bunch of their usual stuff. They, the chair updated them on the spring down donation, um, and they were all very positively looking forward to the town, uh, eventually acquiring that property and the opportunities that that provides for trails and other western uses and so on. Discussion of PV donates and how that might be useful. Um, and then also, uh, under oral communication slash other business, they have oral communications at the beginning and other business at the end, both opportunities for comment by, uh, public and, and members of the committee. They discussed also the, the Sequoia's trail. Destruction. Not sure what the best word for it is, um, and, uh, what we might do and, and what path forward there might be there. Um, one thing that, um, I, I thought might be helpful on that was potentially for some of the committee members to kind of get together with you, maybe, you know, trails, conservation, wildfire. Get together and, and think about coming up with a set of design guidelines for defensible space clearing. So, you know, similar to our other design line guidelines, we could have a, don't do this, do do this kind of pictures, because I think we're going to see a lot of people in town, uh, worrying about fire safety, protect, maybe bring in, uh, Kellex from, uh, RCD for some, for some help and advice there to come up with some guidelines for people. So as they, um, make their properties fire safe, they can do it in a way that is helpful rather than destructive. So, uh, that was it. Oh, and there was a Woodside Highlands Road Maintenance District Residence Advisory Committee meeting yesterday that I was not able to attend yesterday evening. Um, and they were, I think probably primarily focused on their road resurfacing project where they're moving forward on contracting based on our, did approval we did last meeting. Um, oh, and one other thing on the, the subcommittee on reporting, financial reporting. There was an email from staff and Jeremy's probably going to talk about this in his manager report, um, just today. So as of Monday, things had not, we didn't see a whole lot of positive progress signs from them. Jeremy Forden emailed today to the subcommittee that says that they have promising things to show him tomorrow in a meeting they have scheduled tomorrow. So hopefully finally we'll be making some progress on that. And they, they think they may even be able to show a set of reports to him, um, which means hopefully they've got the integration done and things will start blocking there. Um, we'll see tomorrow. Um, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Craig. I see there is a public hand up. Mary Hefte, do you have something to comment on that you've heard already?
Well, I was, uh, uh, for vote, I was, uh, interested in what Craig said about the clearing and, and thinking it also applied to my request for the conservation easements to be made more public. Because it's been my experience in, in, in my immediate neighborhood, uh, that, uh, the enthusiasm for clearing, particularly in riparian zones, which are not particularly vulnerable to fire risk, has been great. And, uh, and some of these areas are officially conserved. And should be overseen if they, uh, if they are over, or at least might be vulnerable to being overseen if nothing else. So I again would make a plea that we know where our conservation easements are in town, particularly in this situation where all the underbrushes being taken out of a lot of places.
Okay. Okay, my reports. Sustainability committee met with a new chair, Walt Hayes, did a very good job. Brandy reported that, uh, she has an intern, um, a student who is going to go to law school in the fall in Berkeley, and he's going to work on the cap. And a piece of the website and some other sustainability work. And in June, she will get another intern who is a student at Cal Poly. There was some subcommittee report outs, the blackout protection subcommittee, they're the ones who are working on what you can do when you lose your power as we do, especially during fire season, um, using EV, solar battery backup, et cetera. And I guess Walt and Stefan, who are that subcommittee, made a presentation to the emergency preparedness committee. And Rebecca. And Rebecca suggested that they make some sort of a easy to understand document for the community that explains all the options that they've come up with. So they're going to do that. Loverine talked about her book club that she wants to kick off. There was discussion of recruiting new members because there were only four members on that committee right now. There was an item calling correcting misinformation and this was brought forward by Rebecca Flynn. And she was talking about how when misinformation is published, say someone says something on the PV forum. She thought it might be helpful for the sustainability committee to say, well, actually the sustainability committee says and corrects the record and gives factual information. Brandy is going to set up an email address for the sustainability committee so that they can do that. Jeremy gave us PV donates speech. Then they talked about the budget. There was also discussion about how we aren't doing earth fair this week, this week, this year because Woodside dropped out and they have four people. I mean, they just can't do it. Perhaps in the future, but not now. And they went through other things that, you know, they don't need to have earth. Earth, I don't know if they're even going to do it for next year. I can't even recall. They were a little bit flexible on where they put their money because they're not sure what they're going to do. Talked about a film lecture series. And then there was an item about how the town plans to save water and encourage residents to do the same. In other words, you know, we're expecting that there's going to be drought messaging and they're going to gear up for that. I think that's mostly everything. Then there was a resource management climate protection committee, which is a CCAG committee. County committee that happened, I think the next day. And on the agenda was a report from Boska from Tom Francis. That's Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. So the state. Can't even read my writing. Hatch hatchy is in good shape. It's normally sixty five percent full. Right now it's fifty six percent full. They don't want it totally full right now. Droughts happening in a lot of places in the, in the state, in most reservoirs. Lucky because our system really works well. We can go two years, two dry years and we're good. Rainfall, as you know, January was a good month, February, not so good, March, little better than February, but not great. Nineteen seventy seven was the driest year ever on record. Nineteen eighty three was the wettest year ever on record. Twenty twenty was a dry year, but not as bad as the driest year. Looks like we're tracking close to twenty twenty. Up country snow pack is better than last year, not quite at average, but definitely better than last year. Weather outlook, not good, looking dry. And in the, if you look at Noah's drought monitor mapping, there are very dark red colors, which shows severe drought already. Our water use is good. We're still tracking close to the five year average. We were, we were using a lot more water in two thousand thirteen than we are now. Last year, water use spiked up in February and March, but then dropped down because it was warm. S F P U C will not make a drought determination until April fifteen. But Boska and other water agencies are coordinating on possible drought messaging. It's possible, we don't know what they're going to say, could be a voluntary rationing. The worst situations in Marin County, they are already, they've already made the call for a drought. Let's see what else I've got. And then we had an item on there's a lot of water storage stuff. There was an item on a Orange Memorial Park Stormwater Treatment and Reuse Project in South San Francisco. There was a an item about CCAG's efforts to advance countywide collaboration on regional scale stormwater management projects to help address climate resilience, water quality and water supply. And this is CCAG's Matt Fabry. He's just amazing in this genre, talking about all the stormwater projects we have that are green infrastructure and how you can do, it's sort of like what Kellex said. You can do a lot of things at once, take care of a lot of issues. And then there was an update on Bay Ren, single family residential electrification case study. Else that I got here. Yet another search committee meeting. This is a CCAG subcommittee to replace the current executive director. And we figured out how many screeners we would have for the applications and who those screeners would be. And we talked about whether to have a single panel. Interview panel or two interview panels. One would be the subject matter experts. And I think that was most of it. Flood and sea level rise resiliency district. There was an update on Bayfront Canal and there's a little wrench in the works. This is this project that has gotten so close to being able to start and the Regional Water Quality Control Board has held it up. And it's a very complicated reason why we applied two and a half years ago. Which should be enough time, but it isn't. They're also delaying our permit from the Army Corps. And it's it sounds like it's a little bit of a rat's nest, but because we're on a deadline, a big deadline. And they say they're going to get us the information by April two, but just in case they aren't, they're already lining up their ducks with legislators to try to put some pressure on them. And then we authorized the contract with the construction management. And then Dave Pine reported out about one of his little committees. This is the committee that's looking in long-term funding for the agency and right now they're, they're, they have an idea to do a parcel taxes would go on the ballot. They've engaged the pollster. It'll be, we'll talk about it further at the next meeting. We got a report on a lot of legislation around the resiliency bills where perhaps there would be money for our agency. And the League of Women Voters is got this series on water and wildfire. And the next one will be on April eight, having to do with Santa Claus, San Carlos, San Mateo, Belmont, Redwood Shores. That's water, April twenty nine, East Palo Alto, Menlo Park. South Redwood City, water. And then June three, and I will let you guys know about this. It's going to be about wildfire. The League of Women Voters presentations I think are usually really pretty good. Then I did something really nice on this week. What day was it? Maybe it was Tuesday. I can't remember. Every year, Meals on Wheels, the Peninsula Volunteers round up all the mirrors in the Southern San Mateo cities. And they go out and help deliver the meals to the people, to the recipients. This year that we can't do that. So they had a, a call that we would make to all the people who would be on our route. So I was paired up with this woman named Shauna Hawk, who's the program manager of adult services for Peninsula Volunteers. And I was on the conference call and then we called, I think, seven people and we talked to everybody but one. And it was really amazing. The first person we talked to in Portola Valley actually knew who she was, but I won't say her name. And she's eighty seven and she was doing pretty well, but she had just gotten some bad health news. We asked some things like, did you get your meal today? What's your favorite meal? Are you vaccinated? How are you doing? Things like that. And she was very chatty. Then we talked to a woman in Atherton who was a hundred and seven. And all these people live alone. That is what is so astounding to me. The eighty seven year old, I think she had a grandchild living with her part-time, the hundred and seven year old had a caregiver there. And we asked how she was doing and she said, not so great today, but I am a hundred and seven. What else? And we also asked, you know, who's visiting you, especially during COVID? And are you still do the neighbors check in, you know, stuff like that. See, then we talked to a ninety eight year old named Bruce who lives in Redwood City. Oh, wait, we didn't talk to Bruce. That was the one we couldn't get through to Renee, eighty two years old, a man still working. And he was very animated. And then we talked to Margo, who's eighty eight and she I'm sure, oh, she was so funny because the Shauna had said, well, Margo, today we have, we have the mayor of Redwood of city, the mayor of Portola Valley on the call and Margo goes, why? And I thought that was such a good response. It was a really, it was, it was a reminder that there are so many people out there. Who are alone and lonely. And it just made me think that I think the way that we live and the way that we treat our older people isn't right. I think people should live in family compounds. Okay. And then the last thing I wanted to say was this was something that came through in an email to me from Chris Rasmussen, who's the commissioner for San Mateo County Mental Health and Substance Abuse Recovery. He said May is mental health month. And he was wondering if all the twenty cities will do proclamations to say May is mental health month. He can give us a template. And he also is asking all the twenty cities to light key city buildings lime green. Because green is the official color of mental health and that would be shining the light on mental health. Not sure that we can do the lime green lighting, but if it's okay with you, I would like to do a proclamation. Great. Jeremy, your report.
Thank you, Mayor Derwin and members of the councils. So I did want to start with the wish at the Sequoias, I've had a number of phone calls this week with representatives of both the Sequoias and then the parent organization Sequoias Living. I have appreciated their responsiveness to my phone calls. I I expect there to be a considerable amount of work moving forward between the town and the Sequoias related to ensuring that the area that's been impacted is thoughtfully restored, replanted and mitigated and monitored over, over the coming years and the Sequoias have every request that I've made and every ask that I've made, they have positively responded to that. We do plan to have some staff, excuse me, some town representatives tomorrow, staff and town representatives tomorrow at a meeting at the Sequoias of their landscape committee. And I do expect a message from the Sequoias to be coming out about what's happened in the coming days. Today, the county Woodside Patrol Valley was at this meeting and the fire district attended a grant meeting. We all joint applied for a grant. That's a very nice hat you have there, Jeff. I have to see, have to say.
Beg your pardon, I'm going to feed him. So I'm listening. I'll be off screen for a second here.
We applied for a grant from the Community Partnership, CPo, I was going to forget the acronym, it'll come to me in a second. With our partners in these jurisdictions, it's community planning for wildfires. And based on the conversation, it sounds like we actually will be receiving some resource from them. It's not monies, it's, it's expertise. Very exciting. We've applied for this grant resource opportunity in the past. And it sounds, it sounds a lot like this year we, we cracked that nut. So I'm delighted there'll be more coming from us. We'll, we'll likely do a presentation with the council. Once this comes through. I, I've been talking to Don Bullard about the letter that he sends out on behalf of the district on an annual basis to all residents around vegetation management for wildfires. And we have some ideas on how to approve that letter in a way that brings some clarity to when people shouldn't be doing work, how they should go about getting permits. Even I think it was actually a suggestion from Craig, some ideas, maybe have some photos showing what to do. So Dawn is pretty excited about it. So I'll help, you know, I'm going to start talking with him and then obviously we'll get the committees involved and have them review what the district puts out. This is more of a story, I think, than anything else. You may know that we've enlisted the help of Congresswoman Anna Schu as it relates to a permit to upgrade our AM radio station to have a more broadcasting power. That permit application has been sitting at the FCC for about a year. So Congressman Schu sent a letter to the FCC asking them to you know, move things along. I was contacted by the FCC on Friday. And instead of a conversation about getting the permit moving along, they wanted to talk about the fact that a year ago, we used the AM radio twice to broadcast meetings and that that was a violation of our permit. It was one of the more bureaucratic meetings I've taken in a while. The good thing was we did have a conversation about the permit and they said that they would do their best to, to move that forward. But I just thought it was an interesting, interesting discussion. I too participated in the Meals on Wheels calls a couple of weeks ago. They were, they were wonderful, talking with residents. And just hearing from them about how they like the program and how they're doing. And I hope, I hope you all get an opportunity to do that in the future. I have completed conversations with all the committees per the council's request on PV donates. I'll be coming back with all of these thoughts that we heard. I would say overall, the people were fairly enthusiastic for the program, thought that the committees would participate. They were interested. So that was good. We have been trying to schedule a neighborhood watch captains meeting. We just have had some trouble coordinating the sheriff's office, but right now we're aiming for May to get that going. That's something we do on an annual basis as a check in. This, the timing is actually pretty good for me because theoretically more people will be traveling this summer. So to remind them of what they should do in the summer months if they're not here. The I want to end with two good pieces of news. I think everyone saw the all sports courts open and our basketball hoops are up. And the vice chair of the of the Parks and Rec Committee put out a note on the forum. We hadn't seen a lot of use in the last couple of days, but I'm hoping that ticks up in a safe manner. And on Thursday, I signed the spring down pledge. So that is done. So we'll be getting copies of that. So it's all in writing. With that, that concludes my report. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeremy. Council Digest on March eleven. Anything? Okay, Council Digest on March eighteen. Okay. Then we will leave this meeting, we will adjourn this meeting and we will go into a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven Public Employee Performance Evaluation title Town Manager. Now, Sharon, you're going to leave and you're going to make me host, correct? And then when And then when I, and then when I, when I'm done with the meeting, I hit the stop meeting button.
In the right bottom right.
So are we automatically, so we just stay where we are?
Yes.
Okay.
So I've locked the meeting and I will make you host and then I'll exit.
You'll want to stop recording to once you go.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome. Bye, everybody.
Bye, Jeremy.
Bye, Jeremy.